Good evening, Chair. Calls order, public hearing for Bill 23-010, zoning code amendment, homestead chickens. Mr. Pennman.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank the co-sponsors of the legislation, also council members Guthrie, Riley, and Bull Sodles. The homestead chicken legislation is a result of the constituent request across several districts. Currently, the zoning code classifies chickens as natural resource and only permits them on two-acre lots. This legislation does not change that zoning classification. When developing this proposed legislation, myself and Councilman Riley met with the planning of zoning, licensing, and permitting to develop the chicken legislation. Based on those recommendations from the county administration, along with comparing other local jurisdictions, the chickens would be identified as homestead chickens and added to an accessory use in the zoning code. This proposed legislation would allow up to 10 chickens on one to two-acre lots excluding roosters. Because of lot sizes, the legislation includes a chicken coop requirement to prevent free-range chickens and also requires a 50-foot setback from the neighbor's property line. I understand the county administration has some additional changes that they would like considered, so we may have some amendments to this bill. With that said, I have not introduced any amendments yet because I am truly looking forward to public comment, interest, and suggestions that could improve this proposed legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. At this time, council, any other comments or questions? Anyone? Mr. Janjordano?
So, I'm going to read some stuff here about chickens. In 2020, the CDC reported salmonella outbreaks linked to backyard birds in all 50 U.S. states resulting in the hospitalization of 333 people, with 24% of ill people being children under five. As of November 2021, 237 individuals have been hospitalized across 48 U.S. states in 2021. Even more recently, in Newfoundland and Labrador, cases of avian influenza had been reported rapidly spreading through backyard coops and to wild animals. In 2022, 1,230 illnesses, 225 hospitalizations, and two deaths in 49 states and Puerto Rico as part of the CDC investigation into outbreaks linked to backyard poultry, according to its website. CDC investigated 13 multi-state outbreaks of salmonella infections linked to backyard poultry. Dr. Kathy Benedict, a veterinarian epidemiologist with the CDC. March 2023, Dr. Michael Oden, Maryland Department of Agriculture, and Dr. David Crum, Maryland Department of Health, reported on the avian outbreak here in Maryland. There is a risk for public-on-infection from this influenza, but this is extreme agricultural problem in Maryland. Spread through the environment of the coops, according to Dr. David Crum. Symptoms: respiratory issues, pneumonia, and other bacterial infections. There is no treatment. Population is key to keeping the risk low. Dander and dust created by the birds is a major respiratory problem. Chickens being in crowded condition has adverse health impacts on chickens such as facilitating the spread of the disease. John Gilson, in his article "Bacterial Respiratory Disease of Poultry," 1998 cites two common diseases of poultry: foul cholera and infectious coriza. The first, foul cholera, is mainly caused by a bacterium Pasteura multicauda, PM. The disease multiplies in bloodstream of birds. Vaccines are available, as are antibiotics. Gilson writes, "Various animals, particularly cats and rodents, are a common source for the introduction of the organism into commercial poultry." The second disease, infectious coriza, is an upper respiratory infection. Gilson notes, "The infection does not spread readily from farm to farm without movement of contaminated people or formites from farm to farm." By outlining these two diseases found in poultry and how they are spread, it becomes apparent that having many chickens in one coop can facilitate the spread of disease due to their close proximity. Another disease threatening commercial poultry, Newcastle Disease, in their piece "Influenza of Poultry, House Dust, Ammonia, and Carbon Dioxide on the Resistance of Chickens to Newcastle Disease Virus," 1966. Anderson, Beard, and Hanson examine how chicken coop air quality impacts the health of poultry. The first set is a baseline by writing previous studies on pneumonia inhalation in chickens showed that 72 hours of exposure to atmospheric concentration in the range of 20 to 50 parts-per-million (PPM) significantly increased the infectious rate of chickens. Subsequently exposed to an aerosol of Newcastle Disease virus, this demonstrates how important air quality is to health of poultry. Chickens are prone to bring in lice, mites, intestinal worms, and other parasites. Uncollected eggs are a magnet for predators and rodents. Most hens lay about an egg a day. If you don't plan on collecting them, they will end up all over the coop, dirty and cracked. Additionally, uncollected eggs are a magnet for predators and rodents, especially in the winter. Raccoons, snakes, and even barn cats love to eat eggs. Hartford County has a variety of wildlife, including foxes, coyotes, raccoons, skunks, birds of prey, mice, and rats. They are also home to many domesticated cats and dogs. Many of these animals prey on chickens, particularly if they are not kept in predator-proof structures. The presence of chickens alone may not necessarily attract animals, but the sounds they make, their diet, and the waste they produce do. The presence of undesired animals in or around backyard coops can cause serious conflict. For example, predators attracted by chickens may also kill, injure, or stress out companion animals like cats and dogs who are let outside. Human-wildlife conflict may also occur while attempting to shoo predators away, possibly leading to an avoidable injury to the human or wild animal. This has been a notable point of concern raised by individuals in Canadian municipalities considering the allowance of expansion of backyard chicken keeping. Unwanted chickens are regularly abandoned by careless or overwhelmed owners. While people may be well-intentioned when they decide to set up a backyard chicken coop, they often find themselves unwilling or unable to care for these animals, who can live to be more than 10 years old but whose egg-laying capacity declines relatively early on in life. Other challenges, such as the cost of food, the cost of building, and maintaining adequate coops, the lack of available or affordable veterinary care, restrictive space requirements, the inability to provide the labor required, noise, mess, or attracting unwanted pests, may all prompt an owner to decide to part ways with their flock in short order. When chickens are surrendered, abandoned, or seized by authority, it fails to the animal rescue groups and sanctuaries to care for them. This add and burden comes without significant cost for these organizations, which are typically volunteer-run charities and nonprofits that receive no government funding. Rescuers may devote time and resources to caring for these animals. Chicken rescue organizations are already overwhelmed, overburdened, and permitted further urban chicken keeping. Further exacerbates this challenging situation. Fired hazards in a building filled with dry feathers, dry bedding, and dry wood adding an ignition source is never the best idea. While these choices still use electricity, the risk of fire from a broken or loose lamp is reduced. Limsy nests, boxes can tip catching a chicken underneath. Depending on the situation, a chicken might suffer from suffocation or heat stroke if trapped under a box. Chickens produce a large amount of waste, and all that waste can cause your backyard to stink. The denser the chicken population, the greater the chance that the waste will become intolerable. A lot also depends on the weather. Rain and heat have a major impact on smell. Roosters and hens express themselves by making a variety of sounds, depending on their level of comfort, excitement, or fear, or based on what type of activity they are engaged in. For instance, hens are known to cluck for extended periods after laying eggs. Their regular crowing, clucking, and squawking oft leads to conflict between neighbors. Odor management also possesses a significant problem for urban chicken keepers, often leading to complaints and conflict. Permitting or expanding ownership of chickens in urban settings invariably leads to more nuisance complaints and in turn, a heightened burden in the form of enforcement resources and costs incurred by bylaw and animal welfare law officials, as well as organizations that care for animals that are surrendered or seized due to a neighborly conflict. Also, chickens don't know whether they're going to be, I think, roosters or not. I think Mr. Guthrie said, what, 12 weeks before you know whether they're going to be a rooster or not?
I read that somewhere.
Thank you very much.
Maybe somebody else has the facts. Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Any other comments? Please. Any other comments from council members? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
We do, Mr. President. We have five this evening.
Call your first speaker. Please be mindful of your time.
Rich Beam, followed by Shelley Hohenberger.
To the mic in the back, sir. Name an address for the record, please.
Mr. Beam, 801 Ontario Street, Hartford, Greece. Good evening. Thank you for letting us all come here tonight. I just want to make a point back when COVID hit, a lot of people got chickens because, I know for me, I couldn't find eggs in the store for a couple of months. And even after that, they were still scarce. And during COVID, you had an explosion of chicken owners. Whole lot of people got chickens during the COVID without even knowing about the current law that was on the books for the two acres. So, a lot of folks are seeing that this movement going to reduce it to one acre and with the restrictions that accompany that, that's a good thing. They see it as a step forward. I still see it as a step not forward. You need to, I propose that you allow everybody to have chickens who wants them and handle nuisances as they come up. Let HOAs handle it as they want to. Let's see, I'm sure, hopefully, this needs to be reiterated probably a couple of times a night. There are other municipalities that have a lot smaller properties. Baltimore City, for a prime example, is very small, 10 by 10 backyards. They're allowed to have their chickens. I'm not familiar if there's any restrictions on coop or not, but obviously, you can't put them 50 feet from there. I also propose, you know, to make the restriction like you would a shed, you know, any other building you intend to have a couple of feet off the fence line. 50 feet? A lot of people don't have 50 feet. If this law goes into effect and you have, you're going to have a whole bunch of people not compliant. You're going to have an overwhelming amount of chickens without homes, especially if it's going to be enforced. With respects to, you know, all the points that were brought up here this evening about the health standards and everything with chickens, they, at some points are fair, but I think some of them are scare tactics when you bring up the numbers of nationwide, how many sicknesses, illnesses, deaths, and everything are. When you compare them to actually how many chicken owners you have, I think if you look at it, it's going to be a drop in the bucket. So, I propose that you let everybody have chickens, make the, go ahead and make your coop standards, limit the numbers of chickens. I get not having roosters in communities where they're going to be a nuisance, but I just think it's still a little unfair. And that's pretty much the point I wanted to make tonight. As far, one other thing.
Your time's coming to a close, sir.
Okay, one last point I'll make.
Your time's out, sir.
Okay, then. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. So, a couple of rules here. There will be no applauding, no outburst of comments. That's part of our rules and procedures. Some of you may be new to the chambers, so please understand where I'm coming from. Ma'am, name an address, please.
Shelley Hohenberger.
Thank you, ma'am.
2807 Beechwood Lane, Falston, Maryland. I would just like to start off by saying thank you for everyone for coming and supporting us and for Councilman Pennman for taking the phone calls and getting this started. I feel that, as you can see, Hartford County is very passionate about their chickens, and education to the comments that you had, sir, are very important, that we all understand the goods and bads, but learn how to make the bads better. I see chickens also as very good pest control. We had a lot of problems with the bugs, the lantern bugs, the cicadas, all that, and the chickens took care of that for us. I think that there's a lot of things that the 4-H can benefit by being able to raise their own chickens instead of having to go to a farm to take care of the chickens part-time. Education is a big thing, but the communities on Facebook do a lot to educate each other, help each other out when someone is in a situation, they need help with their chickens, they've lost chickens, how to take care of hurt chickens. So, I think that public awareness is important, but there's definitely a need for the chickens. And I would also like you to consider dropping it to a half-acre. Baltimore County has a slide when they're zoning on lesser, they go by like 2,000 feet, you can have this many chickens, and then increase the, instead of acreage, they go by feet, square feet, and in that range, according to your square feet is how many chickens you can have. And just thank you for coming out.
Thank you, ma'am.
Gina McDonald, followed by Anthony Di Pietro.
Good evening, ma'am. Name an address.
Gina McDonald, sorry. Gina McDonald, 1009 Hookers Mill Road in Abington, Maryland.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sorry, I have a few notes. First off, Code 267.55-R1234, urban residential districts. The C1 states acres of two or more agricultural use is permitted. According to your bill, sir, the proposed bill, all it states is those that are agricultural are exempt from that bill. Technically, it does not tie into that requirement, so therefore, I would ask that there be a stipulation, that it be those that are two-plus acres that are treated as ag, that it does not apply to us. We have seven acres. We cannot be assessed as ag, which is in your bill, nor are we zoned as ag because we live in a residential envelope. So, that's point one that I would ask to be included in your bill. The other issue is that, due to the number of illnesses that you described, Mr. Giordano, I'd be interested to know, do you also have the facts on how many backyard chicken eggs are sold and what the percentage is of those illnesses versus what's sold? Similar to vaccines, if you look at that, there's always complications, and the fact is, there will always be a percentage of issues. You'd also have to look at issues that occur with Purdue and the fact that their chickens are not allowed to free-range, which according to this bill, there is no free-range capability there to be kept in a coop, which is going to worsen your point of coop conditions, because if you have to keep chickens in a coop, the conditions will become worse in a quicker amount of time, and then you eliminate the ability for them to free-range. So, that is also an issue that needs to be a piece of the legislation if that's indeed going to go through. When you reference also the piece about chickens and whether they're sexed or not, chickens can be sexed, they're called pullets, but pullets even have a percentage based on the type of chicken that you're doing. So, if you really want to make impactful legislation in Hartford County, my suggestion would be going over the big-box stores like Tractor Supply that sell straight runs, and people can walk in and buy straight runs, and straight runs, they are not sexed at all. And many of the chickens that you get from Tractor Supply, not so much the mill locally, but Tractor Supply, they do have mostly straight runs, which means you do not what you know what you are getting. And I do run a rescue, a nonprofit, that sees these chickens. We have taken in many of these chickens. And what I can tell you beyond a shadow of a doubt is that people are passionate about their chickens, and yes, they do get left, but when you have a situation where things break out in coops, and I am being mindful of my time, I have 40 seconds left, when you have issues breaking out in coops and you have egg shortages that are occurring in Purdue, it's the backyard chicken people that are keeping the area supplied with chickens and trying to make it easier from a supply and demand instead of keeping the egg prices going up and up and up to $5.50 and $6.50 a dozen. So, while we may be seen as a problem, we are really the saving grace of Hartford County because we've supplied when nobody else can. I have 10 seconds left. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Name an address, please.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Di Pietro. So, my address is 1604 Randall Wood Court in Cherry Spur.
Thanks, sir.
I just want to voice, I mean, as a person that does rich chickens for eggs as well as for meat, I do have concerns about the setback, even though my property lines, and I want to confirm this, I had a call with zoning yesterday who expressed that with my property being over so many acres, that certain things won't apply to us, but I do have concerns after listening to that person speak about the fact that the setback is a concern. If I'm 50 feet off, I'll be inattention on other property issues I have because of water sources and things on my property line. But then I have, less than 30 feet away, a gentleman who tends to spray crops within less than 30 feet from my wellhead and kills everything within a day. So, I mean, there's got to be some give and take, I think, on that setback of 50 feet. My other concern is, I have notes here, I'm sorry. They're gone. I wanted to confirm that the rural setback for the property line, is that going to be, if not the property line with the setback, I'm sorry, but the quantity of chickens and everything, is that going to stay in place? So, I was told by zoning yesterday that if this passes, since I'm over 1.9 acres, I will not have a limitation of 10 chickens or a rooster on my property. So, I was curious if someone could confirm.
Someone will reach out to you. Mr. Pennman will reach out to you.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Our last speaker this evening is Stuart Page.
You have his contact? Good evening, sir. Name an address, please.
Stuart Page, 2420 Fairview Drive, For Sale. One point I wanted to make is that minimum acreage limits disenfranchised, hard-working, honest, working-class people. And it doesn't matter if it's half an acre or one acre or two acres, you're cutting out food security for a large number of people that live in Canada. Something that's really important, and I think that could be mentioned today, that during egg shortages, it's backyard chicken keepers that are helping to keep that food supply low enough for the people that need eggs. As for talking about disease, I noticed that Mr. Giordano's comments excluded the issues that are handled by large factory ground-pollied country farms that have chickens sometimes in millions in one facility, and they deal with all kinds of diseases because of overcrowding. Backyard chicken owners take care of their chickens, they tend to them, they get far more attention from their owner, they get far more space per square foot per chicken than factory ground chickens, and these are important facts to keep in mind when you're presenting things that are, you know, in the frame of talking about backyard chickens. Anyway, that's all the points I want to make. Please consider the working-class people when you're drawing at your bill. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
With no more speakers, this will conclude this public hearing for Bill 23-010, and we'll take it up at a future meeting. Let's take a quick recess. Good evening, Chair. Calls order legislative session date 23-014. I would ask you to please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Vice President Janjordano.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, thank you for this new month that you have given us, a new month in which to start fresh. Thank you for allowing us to meet again and work together as a team. Please continue to look over the citizens of Hartford County and our first responders. Amen.
Presentation of proclamations, Hartford County Sheriff's Office Explorer Post 6600, celebrating 15 years. Councilman Pennman, Councilman Janjordano, please go down front and well. Gentlemen, if you'd like to come forward, please. If you guys could center up. Whereas the Hartford County Sheriff's Office Explorer Post 6600 is celebrating its 15th year as an explorer post through the Exploring, Learning for Life Division of the Scouting of America, and whereas the program offers area youth ages 14 to 20 an opportunity to learn about the many facets of law enforcement and provides the opportunity to interact and learn from Hartford County deputies, and whereas the explorers learn about the requirements to succeed in a possible future law enforcement career while developing leadership skills, building character, and increase their appreciation for community service, and whereas the explorers that have completed the program have gone on to careers in the Hartford County Sheriff's Office, Hartford County Emergency Operations, Baltimore County Police Department, Baltimore City Police, Baltimore County Fire Department, Las Vegas Police Department, TSA, and various branches of our armed forces. Now, therefore, we, the County Council of Hartford County, Maryland, on this second day of May 2023, do hereby salute and congratulate the Hartford County Sheriff's Office Explorer Post 6600 for their 15th year.
Captain Thomas, I just want to thank you for the program that you have built here with the Sheriff's Office. Being a member of the Sheriff's Office retiring last October, I know how important this program, these men and women that are involved in the Explorer program are to the community, and the foundation that it lays for them for their future. I could tell you, all those people and all those jurisdictions that are working that were explorers, my son was also an explorer and is now serving overseas in the United States Marine Corps. So, again, I want to thank you. Since 2008, this program has been going strong. I hope it continues, and I hope it gets bigger as well. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Captain.
Captain Thomas, I think you told me this is one of the bigger classes that you've had. How many do you have total?
We have 15 total, 12 of them here, maybe.
I know the past couple of years, you've come here, and it seems like it's growing and growing and growing, so we've got a lot of young men up here, appreciate their sacrifice and all you do, and I know you're going to retire soon, and I see you're going to maybe pass the torch or pass the torch on down here. So, look forward to having you continue that success, and congratulations to all the explorers.
No, thank you. It's been a great ride, and I love seeing these kids go on. A lot of them come in and go and stay with our agency, which makes it even better. It's a great success story. It wouldn't happen if we didn't have the support of the sheriff and the people in the community. This is all funded by the community. There is no sub-object for the Sheriff's Office for the explorers, so we raise money on our own, and it's continued. And since 2008, it's been a great ride and look to continue growing kids for the sheriff and other agencies. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please. Is it possible for us to also maybe make a third row?
Yeah.
Everybody squeeze in.
Squeeze in a little bit.
While we get in front, get the guys behind.
Put the short ones in front.
Come up here.
You got to make sure.
Get all these back on.
Short ones, you need to get in the back down.
Yeah.
Just kind of make it a little semicentric.
If I turn my side, how about that? There we go.
Yeah, turn your side way. That's a great idea.
I'm going to pick out a couple people so I can make sure I see their faces. Oh, ew. Can you step this way just a little bit so I can see your face, please? Everybody squeeze a little bit. He's coming a little bit. All right, that's good.
Picture day.
And now, so, council members, please, could you all squeeze this way a little bit so I can see your faces?
To the right.
And, um, Ms. Wilson, could you step back just a little bit, please? Perfect. All righty, that's good.
Move back.
All right, that's good.
All right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yes, sir.
Don't you sit down with our chair. You and Jeannie both.
Executive appointments, citizen nursing home board of directors may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve the new appointment of Shovita Dubois.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is that Mr. Bennett?
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Been moving a second to approve the new appointment of Ms. Dubois to the citizens nursing home board of directors. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I'm thankful to have the nursing home board represented here tonight, and it was nice to be able to meet and talk. Heather's been representing me there during the weekdays because they meet at ten AM, and I'm excited to be able to attend their meetings this summer and to start being able to be consistent with those meetings. And what they do is important, and I'm glad to be able to help build their board because I know having members has been a struggle.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero and a negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Hartford Center Board of Directors may have a motion. Mr. Bennett.
Mr. President, I so move to the reappointment of Nancy Brew and Pam Waltley to the Hartford Center Board of Directors and to appoint Tori Dietrich and Graham Woods to the Hartford Center Board of Directors.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano. It's been moved a second to approve the reappointments and new appointments to the Hartford Center Board of Directors. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero and a negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Historic Preservation Commission may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve the reappointments of Daniel Coats and Jacqueline Seneskow and the new appointment of Arthur Benzer.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Been moving a second to approve the reappointments and new appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero and a negative, the appointments are hereby approved. Agenda item number six, special presentations, we have none. Seven approval of minutes, public hearing, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Legislative day twenty-three dash zero thirteen, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Agenda item eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Resolution zero twenty-three dash twenty-three, annexation zoning waiver Gilbert Road, may have a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a, or what is the motion, ma'am?
Motion to approve.
Resolution zero twenty-three twenty-three. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve resolution zero twenty-three dash twenty-three. Is there any discussion?
Resolution zero twenty-six dash twenty-three, Saint James AME Church and Cemetery Historical Landmark, introduced by Council President Vicente at the request of the county executive. A resolution amending the boundary of the historic landmark designation of Saint James African Methodist Episcopal AME Church Cemetery to include the Saint James AME Church and to rename the landmark as the Saint James AME Church and Cemetery, consisting of a total of three acres located at forty-one thirty-nine Gravel Hill Road, Howard de Grace, Maryland, together with its buildings, environmental settings, and appearances as a Hartford County historic landmark in accordance with chapter two sixty-seven of the Hartford County Code.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano. Mr. Grimm, Mr. Benson? Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening, Council President Vicente and council members. My name is Shane Grimm. I'm the director of planning and zoning, and with me tonight is Jacob Benson, our historic preservation planner, who's been doing great work over the last couple of months since I've been back on board with the county. Tonight, we're pleased to present you with resolution twenty-six dash twenty-three to amend the boundary and name of the historic landmark currently known as the Saint James AME Church Cemetery. Saint James AME Church is located at forty-one thirty-nine Gravel Hill Road, and I'm sure some or all of you are familiar with the site, and it is located within the community known as Gravel Hill, the historic community. Cemetery is identified by Maryland Inventory of Historic Places, number HA seventeen twenty, and the church by HA fifteen ninety. The church cemetery was designated as a county landmark some time ago in nineteen ninety-six, and the congregation of the church has requested that the current landmark status be amended to include both the historic church and the historic cemetery that is located on the property today. The Hartford County Historic Preservation Commission voted unanimously on March first to recommend that the landmark's boundaries be amended to include those features. The current boundary of the landmark encompasses only the Saint James Church Cemetery, excluding the eighteen eighty-eight church building and the nineteen seventy fellowship hall. And you can see on the map there the boundaries. As proposed, the amended landmark boundary will encompass the full parcel at forty-one thirty-nine Gravel Hill Road, including the church, cemetery, and fellowship hall, which is approximately three acres in size. The landmark would be renamed Saint James AME Church and Cemetery, and the contributing features will include the eighteen eighty-eight church building, the cemetery and its grave markers, and the school bell that was saved from the demolished church school building. The gravel parking lot that is servicing the church now is not a part of this request since it is not a contributing feature to the landmark. The Saint James AME Church and Cemetery embodies character, interest, or value as part of the heritage of Hartford County, very important heritage. The church has played an important role in the lives of generations of African-American Hartford Countyans, and has been described as, quote, "a beacon of leadership within its community," serving the spiritual, social, and educational needs of the people of Gravel Hill and the surrounding communities. The cemetery, established in eighteen sixty-four, contains approximately three hundred burials, including multiple veterans of the Civil War who fought to preserve the Union and secure freedom for all Americans. As a center for worship, community, and education, the church and cemetery has the potential to yield significant information about the lives of those individuals who lived, worshipped, were educated, and are buried there, which increases our collective knowledge of the history of Hartford County and its people. The congregation of Saint James AME Church plans to rehabilitate the exterior of their building and has already received approval from the Maryland Historical Trust, which will be accepted by the County Historic Preservation Commission. Mr. Benson and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have about this amended designation for the county landmark. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your presentation, council. Any questions or comments? I know I'm very familiar with the area. My wife grew up on Earlton Road right around the corner, so I'm very familiar with it. I don't have any questions at all. And council, as you know, this is an action item for this evening, so resolution zero twenty-six dash twenty-three will be considered this evening. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve resolution zero twenty-six dash twenty-three.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's been moved in second to approve resolution zero twenty-six dash twenty-three. Is there any discussion? Again, I'm looking forward to having this move forward. Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero and a negative, resolution zero twenty-three dash twenty-three is hereby approved. Mr. Giordano, please read resolution zero twenty-seven dash twenty-three through zero thirty-one dash twenty-three into the record for introduction.
Resolution zero twenty-seven dash twenty-three, Glenwood Avenue Petition Annual Assessment, introduced by Council President Vicente at the request of the county executive. A resolution concurring with the construction of public sewer mains in the Glenwood-Donigal area and the creation of an annual assessment in an amount of no more than two thousand seventy-three per property for a term of thirty years for properties benefited by the construction or, in lieu of the annual assessment, a lump sum payment of no more than forty-six thousand four hundred and twenty-eight. Resolution zero twenty-eight dash twenty-three, Amendment Master Water and Sewer Plan Spring Update, two thousand and twenty-three, introduced by Council President Vicente at the request of the county executive. A resolution providing for the adoption of an amendment to the Master Water and Sewer Plan Spring, two thousand and twenty-three update, a copy of which is attached hereto, and for submission of the amended plan to the Maryland Department of the Environment for its approval and implementation pursuant to Title IX of the Environment Article of the Maryland Annotated Code. Resolution zero twenty-nine dash twenty-three, Amendment Freys Road Public Sewer Project Annual Assessment, introduced by Council President Vicente at the request of the county executive. Resolution amending resolution number eighteen dash seventeen, adopted on January ninth, two thousand and eighteen, concurring the construction of public sewer mains in a five-hundred block of Freys Road area and the creation of an annual assessment in an amount of no more than fifteen hundred and eighty-two dollars per property for a term of thirty years for properties benefited by the construction or, in lieu of the annual assessment, a lump sum payment of no more than thirty-five thousand four hundred and eleven to remove the requirement to apply for a state low-interest loan for the balance of the project funding. Resolution zero thirty dash twenty-three, Amendment Magnolia Road Public Sewer Project Annual Assessment, introduced by Council President Vicente at the request of the county executive. Resolution amending resolution number seventeen dash eighteen, adopted on January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, concurring the construction of public sewer mains in a six-hundred block of Magnolia Road area and the creation of an annual assessment in an amount of no more than sixteen hundred and ninety-eight dollars per property for a term of thirty years for properties benefited by the construction or, in lieu of the annual assessment, a lump sum payment of no more than thirty-eight thousand thirty-two dollars to remove the requirement to apply for a state low-interest loan for the balance of the project funding. Resolution zero thirty-one dash twenty-three, Amendment Woodbridge Manor Public Sewer Project Annual Assessment, introduced by Council President Vicente at the request of the county executive. Resolution amending resolution numbers nineteen dash eighteen, adopted on January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, concerning the construction of public sewer mains in a Woodbridge Manor area and the creation of an annual assessment in an amount of no more than eighteen hundred and fifty-four dollars per property for a term of thirty years for properties benefited by the construction or, in lieu of annual assessment, a lump sum payment of no more than forty-one thousand five hundred and sixteen to remove the requirements to apply for a state low-interest loan for the balance of the project funding. Public hearing for resolution is twenty-three dash thirty-one is scheduled on June sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six PM in these chambers.
Thank you. If you'd like to continue, please read resolution zero thirty-two dash twenty-three.
Resolution zero thirty-two dash twenty-three, Sheriff's Office Central Precinct and Training, introduced by Council President Vicente, council members Jan Giordano, Pennman, Bennett, Guthrie, Boyle Sodles, and Riley. A resolution of the County Council of Hartford County, Maryland, urging the county executive to restore to the fiscal year capital budget and capital improvement plan the construction project for the Hartford County Sheriff's Office Central Precinct and Training Academy and provide funding in order for this, that this project can commence construction.
So that is the fiscal year twenty-four capital budget. I believe he's just read fiscal year.
Fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Didn't have it. Capital budget and capital improvement plan, the construction project for the Hartford County Sheriff's Office Central Precinct and Training Academy, and provide funding in order that this project can commence construction.
Thank you. Resolution zero thirty-two dash twenty-three, Sheriff's Office Central Precinct and Training Academy, this will be an action item this evening. I'd like to start out, any type of comments? As the council president with the prior council, when this was presented to us, it was presented in a light that made us understand the significance of this need, the location, to give quick access to Route ninety-five, twenty-two, Route forty, to protect all of this, that end of the county. It also will provide a fueling station, not only for our sheriff's deputies, but also for our first responders, for our county vehicles as well, maintenance vehicles, whatever is needed. I believe as strongly today as I did then that I think it is a excellent spot and opportunity for us to provide the necessary public safety that the county needs as we grow and as our neighboring jurisdictions grow as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Pennman.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I also want to thank the sheriff and his command staff for being here. I know how hard that you all have worked on this project. I'd also like to thank those on the council that will support this resolution. As we know, this precinct and training center project was already approved by the council, funded through bond sales and the design process initiated. The precinct was approved before it was, because it was a clear and present need for the safety of our community. On April nineteenth, the county executive presented the budget before the council. During that time, the county executive Casely gave the authority to the council to decide if we move, if we want to move forward with the precinct, and he did so several times during that presentation. Just a few quotes from it. County executive said, "I would hope that this council would look at this and look at it seriously. This council needs to weigh in, not the last council, not the last council, and then you all need to relook at this and decide whether we want to move forward. Therefore, if this resolution passes, I am hopeful that Mr. Casely honors that decision of the council and moves forward with this project." That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I mean, Mr. Pennman, Mr. Bennett.
I just wanted to add, you know, I think there's a lot of pieces to this project. You know, I'm in support of it. There's an environmental piece, you know, in limiting the distance that our sheriff's deputies need to drive in order to file their paperwork, in order to do bookings. That limits the amount of overtime that they have to do because of needless driving to the southern precinct and back in handling their routes. It's less wasted gas in those routes to the southern precinct and back, and it's less wasted mileage on vehicles that then have to get maintenance and repairs. So I think there's- So I think there's significant cost savings there and environmental savings there, along with the fact that this is being built on, at the heat center, which is an already developed space. That saves a lot of money for the county, along with not making us pave over more green space that exists in this county, and I think that is important. It also gives a private space for them to train rather than being on the community college campus, and it gives them ample space now that they're going to be moving towards having to do a lot more on-the-job perpetual training beyond, you know, new hire training, and that added space is important. But I also think it's important to recognize, you know, this is one of many issues and concerns that we're addressing and looking towards in this budget cycle. This is step one of many, as we continue to listen to the public, listen to our constituents, and have conversations. So I just want to make it clear to the public, this is not the only action item that we'll be taking in the coming weeks as we continue to work through this budget, but this is the first step that we'll be taking.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Ms. Sodles.
Thank you, Mr. President. As most of you know, public safety was the cornerstone of my first campaign, and it will continue to be where I stand strong. I support our public safety, and I think it's important for our county. I was very displeased to hear that the county executive put the brakes on this project. I think it's important. We even were able to see a presentation at the budget meetings, and it's an impressive and much-needed trade, much-needed training facility and precinct. As it being part of my district, I'm proud to show my support for it tonight, and I look forward to getting things rolling and moving forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
Aye.
Mr. Giandordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in a negative, Resolution zero thirty-two dash twenty-three is hereby approved. Mr. Giandordano, please read Bills twenty-three dash zero sixteen through twenty-three dash zero nineteen into the record for introduction, please.
Bill twenty-three dash zero sixteen, Charter Amendment Term Limits, introduced by council members Penman, Boyle, Sodles, an act to propose an amendment to Article Two legislative branch of the Harford County Charter as amended by repealing and reenacting with amendments Section two oh six, term of council members to provide for term limits for county council members and to require the submission of the amendment to the legally qualified voters of Harford County for their adoption or rejection in accordance with Section nine oh five of the Harford County Charter. Public hearing scheduled June sixth, two thousand twenty-three, at six P.M. in these chambers. Bill twenty-three dash seventeen, School Bus Stop Arm Camera Fees, introduced by council president Vincenti and council member Giandordano, an act to repeal and reenact with amendments Section two forty-four dash twenty-eight, School Bus Safety Cameras Authorized of Article Seven, School Bus Cameras of Chapter two forty-four, Vehicles and Traffic of the Harford County Code as amended, to provide that the civil penalty for a violation shall be set by the chief judge of the district court to clarify the permissible use for fines collected and generally related to school bus cameras. Public hearing is scheduled on June sixth, two thousand twenty-three, at six P.M. in these chambers. Bill twenty-three dash eighteen, Pay Plan and Classification Plan, introduced by council president Vincenti at the request of the county executive. An emergency act to repeal the Harford County Pay Plan and Classification Plan, Harford County Ordinance Number Twenty-One dash zero zero seven, twenty-two dash zero one oh, and to enact a new Harford County Pay Plan and Classification Plan to stand in lieu of the ordinance repeal, to provide a pay plan for county employees, all in accordance with Section six oh three of the charter, and to provide that this act should not be codified in the Harford County Code. Public hearing scheduled on June sixth, two thousand twenty-three, at six P.M. in these chambers. Bill twenty-three dash zero one nine, amended two thousand eighteen Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan, introduced by council president Vincenti at the request of the county executive. An act to repeal and reenact with amendments, subsection A, parentheses three, two thousand eighteen Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan of Section one sixty-nine dash one, adoption legal status of Chapter one sixty-nine Master Plan of the Harford County Code as amended, to provide for the adoption of the two thousand twenty-two Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan as part of the Master Plan and to further, and to further provide that a copy of said two thousand twenty-two Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan, along with all appendices attached to this act, and made a part thereof as though it were fully stated herein. Public hearing is scheduled on June sixth, two thousand twenty-three, at six P.M. in these chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Giandordano. We have to go back to Resolution thirty, or zero thirty-two dash twenty-three. Apparently, I did not call for a motion.
You did not.
Thank you for reminding me of that. So may I have a motion, please?
Counsel President, I move to approve Resolution thirty-two dash twenty-three.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution zero thirty-two dash twenty-three. Is there any more discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
Aye.
Mr. Giandordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye, aye.
With seven votes in the affirmative, zero in a negative, Resolution zero thirty-two dash twenty-three is now definitely hereby approved. My apologies. Agenda item number ten, introduction and consideration of amendments, we have none. Eleven, call for final reading of bills, we have none. Enrollment of bills, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. Agenda item number fourteen, new business, two thousand twenty-three summer schedule. The council, her proposing schedule is as follows. We will meet through June twentieth and recess for July and August. Regular council meetings will resume September fifth. May I have a motion?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to set our summer break from July through August with a return on September fifth.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the two thousand twenty-three summer schedule. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bennett.
Well, I'm supportive of a summer break. It's something that I've enjoyed my entire professional career. I do want to point out, we have a lot of, several key important action items in the next few months, and it's going to be very important as us, as a council, to make sure we get those done before June twentieth so that we're able to enjoy that break and not have to call for emergency meetings and cancel vacation plans.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. And if I may, I would like to remind everyone, I'm probably one of the only council members that has never been on a vacation. My wife and I think over the forty-seven years that we've been married, we've taken one, one-week vacation. So I will be here working through the summer recess every day, and I'm sure that anything that would come up would be dealt with immediately as with as many council members as possible. Mr. Guthrie.
Yes, take care of them chickens.
Not me.
Actually, he's married to Tina Fasini, Vincenti, so he's on a vacation for the last forty-seven years.
True. Mr. Guthrie.
I'm good.
Oh, that was it?
That was enough.
All right. Any other discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
Aye.
Mr. Giandordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in a negative, the two thousand twenty-three summer schedule is hereby approved. We'll go to agenda item number seventeen, comments and input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
We do, Mr. President. We have four this evening. John Malamo, followed by Janine Lacor.
Thank you. I would just remind everyone again to be mindful of your time, respect each other, and we will not be speaking to the budget this evening. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. John P. Malamo, twenty-four oh two Eagleview Drive. At final argument, the Board of Appeals, council president recusing himself, ratified and adopted as its own, the hearing examiner's recommended decision on zoning case fifty-eight fourteen. The special exception to operate a general aviation airport at thirty-five thirty-eight Aldina Road as a permitted use was granted. All administrative remedies were exhausted at that point. The Board of Appeals' decision was petitioned for judicial review to the Harford County Circuit Court. There was a hearing, and the judge considered the record of zoning case fifty-eight fourteen and memorandum submitted by myself, Harford County People's Council, and the Airport Owners Group. I must add that he was most patient and considerate of my presentation. Presiding judge can only legally consider the records of zoning case fifty-eight fourteen. He affirmed the zoning Board of Appeals' decision. The airport owners did not appeal. They are now foreclosed from judicial remedies. The results? The nonconforming use was extinguished, and the use of the nonconforming use is no longer allowed. The principal use of the property at thirty-five thirty-eight Aldina Road is now a general aviation airport as a permitted use. All of Part One of the zoning code applies. Only accessory uses enumerated in the code are permitted. The unmanned aerial system and skydiving uses are not permitted. Accessory uses normally associated with the principal use may be allowed unless otherwise restricted. The sale and storage of gasoline is not permitted in any district unless all adjacent properties are on public water. None of the adjacent properties around the airport are. All maintenance and servicing of aircraft, including fueling and defueling, must be conducted in a fully enclosed building. The land upon which the MAA required approach and landing paths are conducted upon is in the Ag District. Those paths are included in the commercial operation. There is well more than fifty percent of the commercial operation conducted upon land in the Ag District. Review the airport layout plan for validation. The use is limited to the site plan and conditions approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. One runway, no approach and landing paths. This is what the airport owners requested and fully agreed to. They got exactly what they requested. They have no administrative or judicial recourse. According from an article in the local newspaper for September twenty-fourteen, at final arguments, council for the Airport Owners Group told members, "I believe the hearing examiner got it exactly right. I don't believe a remand is necessary or appropriate." Indeed. Mr. Guthrie, am I disturbing you?
No, you're not. Go right ahead.
The story gets more interesting. We will introduce the people directly involved with the airport decision. We will review the policies, practices, processes, and procedures they followed. These are the same people who will make land use and zoning decisions in Harford County for the next four years. Good night.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Janine Lacor, eighteen twenty, Park Beach Drive in Perryman. And I wanted to talk tonight about Harford County's plan for growth, and I was out on the Harford County website, and the Harford County Growth Report for two thousand twenty-two on pages fourteen and fifteen features why Harford is ideal for growing logistics operations. And it goes on into saying that, you know, a big part for Harford County is growing the manufacturing and logistics base. However, the article focuses entirely on logistics, and I want to make sure everybody is very clear on the difference between manufacturing and logistics. Manufacturing focuses on creation and transforming raw materials into a value-added product. Logistics focuses on moving products from point A to point B. There's not value added in that process. And Harford County is focused on, the article goes on and focuses entirely on the amount of logistics centers that have come into Harford County. And it touts itself as saying, as for land, Harford County is less expensive, the land in Harford County is less expensive than neighboring counties. So the value proposition in Harford County is, let's come to Harford County for cheap land, and we'll fill up desert, and we'll dump all this logistics center in specific areas, which has happened down in Perryman. It goes on and talks about, you know, the economic growth and the value created. Well, logistics jobs really don't create that much value. When we look at living wages from the MIA, from the Living Wage Calculator from MIT, the living wage in Harford County is eighteen dollars per hour. Logistics jobs in Harford County, such as warehouse jobs, really just range from a low of eleven dollars an hour to twenty-two dollars an hour. So you're barely, you're sitting right around the living wage. That's really not creating economic prosperity. So I'm, I think this, I think it's time Harford County refocuses what the value proposition is here. The other aspect is, when we focus on local community development, you know, Mrs. Boyle Sodles, you talked about public safety being foundation of your campaign. We've also heard things about land preservation, and allowing a situation occurring in Perryman, it is simply not safe. I encourage all of you to come visit Perryman during shift changes, during a heavy rainstorm. It is simply an unsafe situation. As for land preservation, taking pristine land, farmland, over seven hundred acres that has never been developed and that abuts to the Bush River, and putting warehouses and paving that land over is simply not land preservation. So I would really encourage the council to think highly about what we're doing and what the future of Harford County looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Brittany Russell, followed by Paul Filacci.
Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Brittany Russell. I live at eighteen twenty, Park Beach Drive in Aberdeen, Maryland. I, like Jacob Bennett, have enjoyed a career where I have summers off and take vacations with my family. And, Mr. Vincenti, I really have to encourage you to try to do that this summer. So, good evening. It's been over a year of standing up here with my community, begging you to help support us and help support Perryman, and it's incredible to finally feel like we are actually being heard. But the truth of the matter is that this is far from over. I've spoken a lot up here about being a mom, and simply put, I am just a mom who wants her kids to be healthy and happy and safe, especially while they're at home. I want them to breathe clean air, drink clean water, and even though I know when they begin to drive, I will be an absolute nervous wreck, I really don't want them to drive on inadequate roads with poor infrastructure or to be sharing the roads with hundreds to even thousands of tractor-trailers. I have a hard time understanding how one person's property or development of a property can be allowed to have such a detrimental effect on so many others. The promises of jobs, job creations and economic growth as a result of the warehouses that have already been put in Perryman have been broken. Many of these warehouses sit empty, and there has been no benefit for the community of Perryman. Today, Perryman's household median, median income is thirty-six percent below that of Harford County, and eighteen point one percent of Perryman families live in poverty, which is more than double that of Harford County. To me, the geographical distribution of the existing and proposed warehouses in Harford County shows a disparate impact on the Perryman Peninsula. Disparate impact commonly is referred to as unintentional discriminatory practices, whereas disparate treatment refers to intentional discriminatory practice, practices. I really question whether what's happening in Perryman is unintentional or if it is, in fact, intentional discrimination. Sixty-four percent of Harford County's warehouse square footage resides in District F, with forty percent of Harford County's warehouses' square footage located in Perryman. This means that Perryman, a small community of around twenty-three hundred people, is bearing a disproportionate burden of the warehousing industry within Harford County. Is this disparate impact or treatment? Again, as a mom, it's very typical for me to want my children's home and their community to be valued the same way that the homes and the communities are valued in Bel Air and Darlington. Disparate impact or disparate treatment? We must continue to do better. And, Mr. Penman, I see you with your chickens. I know a place where we would much rather have chickens and farmland than warehouses and tractor-trailers. Have a good night.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Paul Filacci, three twenty Marina Avenue in Perryman. I want to start by thanking Councilman Bennett for coming out to the YMCA Healthy Kids Day on Saturday during the day from ten to one, and then also... on Saturday during the day from 10 to 1, and then also for attending the 3P Protect Perryman Designer Bag Bingo on Saturday night. We appreciate that for coming out. Why does Hartford County need to modernize its zoning codes? As a Perryman resident, I will tell you why we need help. Perryman's a residential community of over 700 homes that currently shares Perryman Road and Old Philadelphia Roads with over 10 million square feet of mega warehouse freight distribution centers. Spisucha Road is the main commuter thoroughfare from Route 40 for the majority of the cars that travel to and from these businesses. Unfortunately, many trucks illegally travel on this road as well each day. I see two of those trucks every morning at 4:55 on my way to the YMCA in the morning. Spisucha Road has no shoulders, sidewalks, crosswalks, but also has a lot of pedestrians either walking to the Perryman convenience store or waiting on one of the four bus signs that are on the road. Not bus stops, just bus signs. Why are some of these areas that need to be modernized? Traffic studies that don't add sidewalks, shoulders, proper bus stops, and pedestrian crosswalks to roads like Spisucha, Perryman, and Old Philadelphia Road, zoning laws need to be updated and modernized to make these roads safe. Adding farmland, forests, woods surrounded by neighborhoods to enterprise zones show residents that these rules only favor developers and need to be updated and modernized. Community input meetings, developers are not required to make any changes based on public input. That is not called input. It should be updated and modernized. Development Advisory Committee, inform the development, the developer of technical requirements. Public comment is welcome, but any changes based on public input are not required. The process should be updated and modernized. Size and intensity of use of buildings should be measured and restricted within residential neighborhoods, especially when planned road connections like 715 to Woodley Road and Route 40 to Perryman Road are cited for over 20 years in SIM and DAC meetings but never implemented. Again, zoning laws need to be updated and modernized. I can't say a bunch of this part here, so hopefully we can find a few dollars for shoulders, sidewalks, crossworks, bus stops, because Perryman sure could use some. The current zoning laws don't provide for them. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Very good. We'll move on to agenda item number 16, business from council members. Mr. Bennett.
Hello, good evening. It's been a very busy few weeks. We've done a lot. A lot of us have been at the same thing, so I'll save some things for Pat to share for the sake of time, but I just want to comment on a few of the things I've been up to. I got to meet with some community members in Creswell, who, like our members in Perryman, are very concerned about development and want to make sure that as we're continuing to look at development plans, that we're putting residents in the environment first and making sure that that always stays at the forefront of our conversations. I met with some partners from the Community College to talk about the future of making sure that we're keeping the employees at the Community College at the forefront of our mind as we expand the work that they do with the HTTPS and HTC connection. I got to go to the YMCA, which was a lot of fun, and just hear about some of the work that they do connecting with our community and hear about just some of the work that they want to do, continuing to try and connect with other partnerships to bring more kids in. And I look forward to building on that relationship more. And also, I got to play bingo, which I did not win, which was very frustrating for me. At one point, I got within two of getting bingo, and I screamed because I just got another dot on my thing, but I did not get bingo. And, but I also just want to recognize that today is National Teacher Appreciation Day. Next week is National Teacher Appreciation Week. You know, I would not be who I am without the teachers that I grew up with who cared for me so well. I wouldn't be who I am without the teachers that continue to care for me so well in my own school building that I work with each day. And that includes the people who are our support staff. And I just wanted to take a moment in honor of National Teacher Appreciation Day and Teacher Appreciation Week next week to point out that a lot of the people who work in our school buildings in Hartford County make less than $30,000 a year working directly with our children. You know, just a few years ago, people working one-on-one with our child, children with the most intense needs started out at $16,000 a year, full-time, 10 months a year, taking care of our children who are the most in need of services and care. Now thankfully, the school system's done a lot of work to increase wages. You know, I think they've gotten a 31% wage increase in the past three years, but even so, that brings them up to $21,000, $21,000 a year, when, as it was pointed out tonight, a living wage in Hartford County is $38,000 a year. So as we appreciate our educators in Hartford County, I hope we recognize the work that they do and the sacrifices they make to do that work, because, you know, I think of educators like Ms. Jackie, who even as an inclusion helper, making a tough salary, when it's a holiday or when it's a kid's birthday, she's the first to rush out to the dollar store and make sure those kids feel special, you know, even if it means that she's getting a cab to get there because she cares about her kids. And so I hope that we all take a moment to appreciate some special educators in our lives in the next week. So anyway, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Sodles.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Last week, we concluded our 24 budget work sessions. We've received thousands of emails, and I've done my best to respond to them all, but forgive me if I haven't gotten back to you. The next step is the budget public hearings, which will be held May 4th and the 10th, beginning at 7:00. And if you'd like to speak, please sign up in advance. I would encourage you to do that because I think we're going to have very busy nights. That's all I have for tonight. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you. Mr. Riley.
No comments, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Janjerdano.
Thank you, Council President. I attended Law Day yesterday with a couple of my other councilmen, so congratulations to County Bar Association and Mr. Carl Schleg for their hours of pro bono service to the citizens of Hartford County. I attended the Bel Air Volunteer Fire Company annual banquet with Councilman Pennman and Council President Vincenti's Sam Harris stood in for him, so congratulations to the 2023 awardees. Tended the Route 40 Spring Roundup at Le Blanc in Havertagh Grace, and also tended the Hartford County Sheriff Deputy Awards, Annual Awards up at the church. I don't know what church that's called.
Nazarene.
Church of the Nazarene. So thank you, Council President. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Janjerdano and Mr. Pennman.
I'll reserve my comments for tonight.
You'll reserve your comments for tonight?
Maybe next week.
Oh, okay. Very good. That's a first. Mr. Guthrie.
Good, that means I can have his time.
No, sir.
I'll take my time.
Hey, you gave me a lot of comments last night, compliments last night. I don't want to make light of the chickens, okay? So my comments, I'm not trying to make light of chickens, but I learned more about chickens tonight than I think I ever knew. Even though when I was young, we did have, we did raise some chickens and get the eggs from, but this is the first time I even knew, even knew that, that there's homeless chickens that we take care of and also rescue them. So that was something that I didn't realize, and congratulations to the people that are taking care of our chickens. Saturday, April 22nd, I attended the Daughters of the American Revolution Award Ceremony at the Maryland Golf and Country Club. And I'll tell you, when you, you attend something like that and you see all the youth in our county, you really get, you get to feel really good to what, what we raise here and the kids that we raise here. They're very impressive. Also, on the other end, former Sheriff Jesse Bane was there, and he won an award for his 50 years of community service to Hartford County. On April 26th, I attended the 60th anniversary of the Bar Harbor RV and Marina on the Bush River. I was, I guess I was taken back a little bit because I've only lived in this county for 57 years, and I've never been to this RV park. And I was just, I was amazed at how beautiful this place was. Since 1963, Joan and Phil Silver have owned and operated the Belt Bar Harbor RV Park and Marina. The eight-acre waterfront property provides an opportunity for pisterek, pisterek recreation, camping for customers who come, they say, from all around the world. This upscale, upscale campground includes swimming pool, gift shops, grocery store, playground. Guests can relax in the garden near the pool, fish from the park decks, or rent a canoe, kayak, or paddleboard for a trip on the water. So it was, it's impressive. If you haven't been there, they certainly keep a, absolutely clean facility, and they're right there on the Bush River, so they probably got better than 1,000 feet or so on the Bush On Saturday, the 29th, we had the Edgewood cleanup at Brookside Drive in Hartford Square and Cedar Drive. I was able to help the people there get three large dumpsters to help clean up the area, and we were there at 8:30. Mr. Pennman, Councilman Pennman was there with us, and so was the county executive, and we went around with our trash bags, and we did a lot of picking up of a lot of trash, so I appreciate their help in the Edgewood area. I also attended the Labor Day in front of the courthouse, and I'm kind of a little upset that I forgot the speaker's name, but I thought his speech was one of the most impressive speeches I've heard in Hartford County.
Honorable Alex Jones.
Judge Jones, in a long time. Last night, we had the Edgewood Chappa Chappa Town Community Advisory Board meeting. This is the second meeting we've had where we've had merge the areas, and Councilman Pennman was also there, and we started a half hour early because they run rather long because of merging the two groups. And it was literally a packed house because it's the two areas, we get a lot of people, probably 50, 60 people in attendance, probably one of the biggest in the county. And certainly, we talked about a lot of things in the area, a lot of things are happening in the area, that there is a lot of things going on, a lot of construction and work that, that we're all proud of. With that, Mr. President, I'm done.
Sure. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Guthrie, I think. Yes, we've all been extremely busy, running from event to an event, but also, as Ms. Sodles said, we finished our four budget work sessions. I want to give a shout out to our citizen budget advisors who spent those four days with us, those four long days with us. I also want to thank the county executive, the superintendent, all of our department directors, deputy directors, all of our outside agencies, everyone that took the time to sit with us, some longer than others, granted, some two and a half, three hours, some 30 minutes, the sheriff, obviously, all of our fire and EMS folks. It is important for the subject matter experts to come and sit in front of us and give us the information that we need to fully try to understand the budget as a whole. It's a huge document, this year again, nearly $1.2 billion. We received the budget, according to the charter, by April 15th this year. We got it on Friday, the 14th, at the end of business, and it gave us five days to prepare to go through that document. So I want to thank all of them for their willingness to sit and answer our questions. Also, we will be starting our first public hearing Thursday evening. As always, I will ask everyone that attends that public hearing to be respectful of each other. We will be very mindful of the decorum in the room. We're here to talk about business. We're going to be here to talk about the budget. We're not going to be here to talk about any individual or anything like that, so we are going to be very mindful of that, again, Thursday evening. Some of the events that we attended, I think Councilman Bennett was talking about, the Havertagh Grace Ambulance Corps. We were very honored to be a part of the first team leaving there that Saturday morning at 6:00 a.m., Hartford County medics. For me, it was very special because I joined that ambulance corps in 1972, fresh out of high school, and rode that ambulance for 10 years, graduated from the second class of EMTs in the state of Maryland. So it was, I remember when we would have discussions on buying equipment, how cheap it was back then compared to what it is today. And to walk into that facility today and see four medic units in there with all the support vehicles and staff and equipment, it's amazing. And very pleased to see the county stepping up to take on this responsibility. Also, the Hartford County Sheriff's Award Ceremony. I have to give a great, I guess, congrats to Councilman Pennman for receiving his community service award. Unit Citation, is that what it was? Very good. I didn't get anything, though. You know, I was looking for a Stetson or something, you know? But no, congratulations for that. Also, the Hartford County Chambers Commerce's Legislative Wrap-Up, we attended that at the college, and several other things that I'm not even going to mention, but I also want to, Jeanie and I want to express our deepest condolences to Bill Securo's family for the sudden passing of Bill. Many of everyone that knew Bill knew that he was a very quiet but mighty man. He opened doors for many of us in the business community and the education community for many years, and it's easy for me to say that Bill would be missed by all who knew him. We ask you to keep Ms. Kay, his family and friends in your thoughts and prayers. And with that, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.